Okay. I hereby call this meeting to order. As that we rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ajit, would you put up the flag for us? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it's the one nation.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you. Chairman Taylor. Good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see you all virtually. I know that we typically have our meetings during the mornings. So to have one at night is a positive thing. Hopefully, we could get more people to watch it. But I know that we're competing with some very lively news broadcasts on every station. So if our attendance is low online, I think there's a good reason why everyone's glued to their TV to see what's happening with the election. With that, I want to just say that we have a special treat at this point. It was actually a wonderful recommendation made by board member Erin Benham quite some time ago. There was a resident of the town where she lives in Wallingford, who received an award. And we asked this person to sing for us. And I'll just read the bio here now of prep his video of him singing with a little bit of information about the gentleman. His name is Terrence Bogan. Terrence is an 18-year-old freshman at Trinity College in Hartford, Connecticut, where he plans to major in political science and public policy and law with a minor in human rights studies. Terrence is from Wallingford, Connecticut, where he attended Sheehan High School. He spends most of his time at Trinity, being a multi-sport athlete in football, indoor track, and outdoor track. Terrence also performs onstage in plays and in musicals. At Trinity, he is the 2024 class president, admissions council representative, student life committee member, and Athletes of Color Coalition freshman representative. You know, we asked him to join our meeting and, you know, we originally were going to have a meeting in person, and he was going to come. And we were trying to set up the dates. And he communicated with us, which speaks a lot to his character. He communicated with us that he would have loved to come in person, but he tutors other someone else on Wednesday evenings. And he didn't want to miss his tutoring session. So what he did was he provided us a video. So it's my pleasure to introduce Terrence through video, a recorded video. And he's going to be singing the National Anthem.
Bravo.
Bravo, bravo. Thank you.
Miguel, if I could just add too. He probably was shy saying it. But the reason I wanted to bring him forward is he was a graduate, a top of his class. But he had also, on the same night he graduated, had won the Broadway Recording, a national singing competition over 2,000 students across the nation. And he came in first place. And I thought, this is, you know, this is a child we should have in front of us to see what Connecticut students can do, so.
Thank you very much, Erin. Miguel, Commissioner? Commissioner, were you waving your hand? You're muted, apparently. The next item on our agenda is a very sad one. You all know the
I apologize for that. I was muted. I'm sorry about that. I'm back on. Chair.
Did you wish to speak?
Well, I wanted to say, I see that we got to the next part. But I wanted to say, I wanted to thank Erin for bringing him forward. And yes, he won. And, you know, on a day like today, and I know what you're going to be sharing now, you know, to hear his beautiful voice. Really inspires me. Screens now imagine in person. Maybe in the future, we'll have a chance to have him come and sing to us in a live meeting. So thank you again for that and for that beautiful rendition, Terrence.
Thank you.
Alan, before we go on, is anybody else having difficulty with audio?
There was a buzzing that sounded almost like somebody's fluorescent light.
Yeah, I can hardly hear people speaking when it's on.
But I don't feel like now. So I think we can go on. I think everyone knows our friend and colleagues. Eric Clemens' wife died Monday, I believe, or Tuesday. Suddenly. Think we should have a moment of silence and recognition of Eric's loss and sympathy for him and his family. That you join me in that. Thank you. Al, the roll call.
Yes, good evening, board members. I will now do an attendance roll call. Chair Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Locas.
Present.
Erin Benham.
Present.
Bonnie Burr.
Here.
Condolences to Eric Clemens' absence. Karen DeBose-Walton.
Present.
Howell Wood-Exley.
Present.
Donald Harris. You're muted, but I know you're here. Okay, Martha, Martha Prue.
Present.
Thank you. Awil Dariasco.
Present.
Malia Seavy.
Present.
Robert Trufay.
Present.
And Dr. Jane Gates in for President Marco Jaikin.
Chair.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That concludes the attendance roll call.
Thank you. We have a quorum, obviously. We received two written statements for public participation, which everybody, I believe, has received. And we have one registrant for oral presentation. Dr. Jones and Ditto. Is Al, can you get her on?
I think that would be Ajit, that would
Hi, Joan. If I'm muted, you, you can be able to make sure.
I think, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for the opportunity to provide some comments to the Stakeboard of Education at your My name is
Joan, can you please try to speak?
My name is Joan and Ditto, and I am current treasurer of the Connecticut chapter of the American Association for Colleges for Teacher Education, often called AACTP Connecticut Chapter. I am also the Director of Education Programs at Albertus Magnus College in New Haven. The AACTP Connecticut is an association of 14 public and private colleges and universities that provide educator preparation programs to students interested in education as professionals. We promote and strongly support high-quality teaching and education in the state's schools and are advocates for robust educational leadership. We thank the Board of Education, Commissioner Carrionna, and the entire Department of Education, especially those in the talent office and the Bureau of Certification, which we work so closely for their continuing support of teacher preparation programs and teacher candidates, and all of the fellow colleges and universities. The AACTP Connecticut Chapter and all of the respective members of the colleges, universities, and directors are working hard individually and collectively during the continuing public health crisis to quickly respond to new challenges facing our programs or faculty and investors. As we have learned from the COVID-19 public health data that has happened since, during Connecticut, the infection rate is on the rise in many parts of the United States. This is all really impactful source with more and more districts who are being piped in are fully involved and structural onwards. Our educator preparation programs will continue to collaborate with the schools and colleges and local ministers to provide our teacher candidates with a complete mix of diversity and diversity. We especially want to thank those who have a true concern as cooperating teachers for arts and teachers during these times of COVID-19. They are models of insularity and confidence and of interest in the field of science. The AACTP Connecticut Chapter is forward to continually working together with the Department of Education for the better of educational stakeholders, such as the Connecticut Association of Public Schools and Universities, the Connecticut Association of Public Schools and other large organizations. As always, we will continue to advocate by the other side of the bridge to access the more specific space in a technically diverse universe. Thank you again for your ability to provide some
I just heard something say unmuted. Have you not been hearing me up to this point? This is great. Okay. May I have, I don't think we have any executive session. May I have a motion on the minutes? Can anybody hear? Karen, Don, one of you just moved the minutes? Okay. They've been seconded, I think. Desi, what's going on?
Okay, I'll move acceptance of the minutes. We were unable, we were unable to mute for a moment.
Okay. Minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, let's do it by show of hands. Thank you. Anybody opposed? Oh, okay. That's unanimous. Commissioner, we're to you.
Commissioner is still having some audio issues. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have unmuted myself, Commissioner. I think he's trying to join back in. I'm not sure why he is losing audio. I'm sorry. I really don't know why we're having this issue. But thanks for your patience.
Okay, thank you, Desi. Well, then we'll should go on. Don't think we have any items requiring action. The chair has nothing to report, having been thoroughly hunkered down. Financial matters.
Alan, can I please pause for just a second? Desi is telling me that he is not able to unmute either. Commissioner, you're back. Are you, do you have audio now? I'm sorry, I'm really not sure what's why that's happening. Matt, can you pause the stream, please?
Where are we in the agenda, Chair?
I think we're on your report. Well, no, the
Correct.
I'm sorry, the did we have, we don't have any live public participation, do we?
No, no, we finished the minutes. So now we are actually right at the report of the Commissioner.
Good. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to ask Ajit to please pull up my report. Appreciate everyone's patience.
Okay, your, I see your report front page.
Thank you. So I'll get started. And, you know, first of all, you know, board member Clemens, we're with you and your family. You're deep in our prayers. I also want to take a moment and ask for a moment of silence for Dr. Gerald Tarazi, former Commissioner of Education here in the state of Connecticut from 1980s to the early 90s. He was a commissioner. He also worked at the United States Department of Education and served as the Director of the National Association of Secondary School Principals. He also passed away recently. So we want to please take a moment for Dr. Tarazi. Thank you all. So I want to go through the Commissioner's report. As you heard earlier, there's a video that I think you'll enjoy watching. But I want to just kind of go through the next several slides rather quickly so that we get to the video. We've been very busy at the agency. You know, a highlight was the Teacher of the Year Ceremony. I'll talk a little bit more about that, or the announcement, I should say. We, I've had the opportunity to meet with over 100 superintendents in the last, excuse me, in the last month in different area superintendent meetings, where we come together to just kind of talk progress. That's a great opportunity to hear how things are rolling out in the districts. I had the pleasure of participating in various statewide, national Hispanic Heritage months, celebrations, and focus groups and conversations. Really great. And then visited classrooms in Farmington and Meriden. And I'm excited tomorrow I'll be in Middletown. Next slide, please. My department has been really busy, just putting on webinars and support for districts. You know, I think it's an important thing to remind the board that we really are aiming toward being a service agency, right? There's so much that districts have to do. It's really important that we are viewed as a support to districts and ultimately to students. These are some of the events that have been going on in, in our, in our agency in the last month. Next slide, please. You know, some of it has been related to the pandemic. Obviously, that's a priority. However, I assure you that we've been continuing with the work of teaching and learning and ensuring equity and access, which is a priority for all of us at the agency and for you as board members. Highlight of the month was visiting Paquonic School. And I made sure I got the pronunciation right, or else Desi would not let it down. What a, what a great visit. We got to see there the Teacher of the Year, Connecticut Teacher of the Year, Rochelle Brown, and the Paraeducator of the Year, Maria Sau. And it's never been the case where we've had the same, we've had the Teacher of the Year and the Paraeducator of the Year in the same building. So it was really cool to go there and surprise one person. And then the other person was in the audience, not knowing that we were there for her as well. Here's a picture of them when they found out that day. What a wonderful visit. So I want to take a moment, next slide, please, to just introduce you to them. Connecticut's Teacher of the Year is Rochelle Brown. She's a kindergarten teacher at Paquonic School in Windsor. She taught US Citizenship course through Windsor Continuing Education Program, joined an after-school program for boys of color to address the achievement gap, which included traveling to, traveling these students to other states to engage them in cultural and educational experiences. She serves as the co-chair of her school and district's Equity Committee. And last but not least, I think she's most known for having such a wonderful, diverse collection of books in her classroom. We visited her classroom, the governor and I visited her classroom. Beautiful, beautiful classroom, such positive energy in that classroom. It was such a treat to go into that classroom of little five-year-olds smiling and, you know, they love their teacher. It was such a great feeling. And I got to see right away why she's the Teacher of the Year, Connecticut's Teacher of the Year Rochelle Brown. Congratulations. The Paraeducator of the Year is Maria Sau, also at Paquonic School. She's one of the oldest of 13 siblings in her family. And, you know, she had the responsibility of helping raise her siblings. And it's interesting because, you know, she takes pride in recognizing all the strengths of her students. She works with children that have exceptionalities and require additional support. But, you know, she says the way she approaches her job is to look for their strengths and really focus on that, not disability. I love that mentality. And she says that she treats all of them like they're, like her family. And that's why she, it brings out the best in her and, and the students are able to speak. She shared that her greatest accomplishment is when a student grows up, comes to visit her and says, thank you for believing in me and for helping me in school. So congratulations to Maria Sau. I'm, and congratulations to Windsor, too, for the nominations. A great job there. I also want to acknowledge that we partnered with Enfield's Phoenix Manufacturing to get a field trip of sorts of some of, some of our educators across the state. I want to acknowledge Irene Perici for working very closely with our very own Martha Prue. I think I might have mentioned this last month, but now you, you know, pictures worth a thousand words. So not only do you get to see the educators visiting the Phoenix Manufacturing, but you also get to see Martha doing her teacher's role. And she's standing there in front of the classroom, giving, in front of the slide deck, talking to the educators there. You know, and we did this because we really feel that the best way to talk about college and career readiness and making sure that our students are prepared for the jobs of today is to give school district folks an opportunity to visit some of these places and see what it is and also see what it is to give school district folks an opportunity to visit some of these places and see what it is and also see what it is. So Martha raised her hand and said, "You know what? I'm willing to open the doors. Feel free to send them in." And Irene took her up on that offer. So thank you for organizing that. Martha, did you want to add anything to that?
It was great. We had a very, very collaborative tour with the groups of educators who came out. And one of the things that, that was so great to hear from Irene and all the good work that's been going on is this change of tide, and I'm going to quote somebody else, that manufacturing, you know, used to be about brawn and physical labor, and we're so working so hard to dispel those myths because it's much more about brains now. And working, this isn't the best picture of my facility, so I'm cringing because they're the oldest machines, but I would invite all of this board and any other educators so it can do further collaboration in my facility and other, in other companies throughout Connecticut.
Thank you, Martha. And I think, you know, Martha is modeling what we know needs to happen. Yes, schools need to be open and receptive to looking at jobs of today and tomorrow, but these partners in the, in the field have to open their doors and say, "How can we help create externship programs? How can we help work with districts to create elective courses that might feed into some of this work with colleges?" So Martha, thank you for modeling that and for not only supporting it on the Board, but also in your day job. So thank you very much. Next slide, please. We also had the opportunity to provide that civic, that important civic lesson of voting for our juniors and seniors and providing them a platform for their student voice. We held mock elections in, I believe it was fifty districts, forty-eight districts, and over three thousand students voted. And I want to thank Chris Soto for helping organize that with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. It was a success. Next slide, please. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through cases in schools, but I wanted to share with you that the transition from the State Department of Education collecting these cases to the Department of Public Health collecting and reporting this, these cases has been complete. And you'll have a link, and what I'll ask is, if we could, I'll just have the link sent to members of our board so they could bookmark it or keep it close. And it, and it tells you the cases, you know, it breaks down the cases by, you know, adults or students in the buildings. It also breaks it down by the model of school that they're in, so if it's hybrid model or if it's full in-person or remote. And that's being done daily. Cases are being reported, and it's being updated weekly. So what I'll do is I'll have that link sent to you so that you can look at that information and have that. Next slide, please. As you know, we still collect the data on school models, and that's something that we are going to continue to collect. Next slide, please. And the graph here shows the percentage of districts that are predominantly fully in-person. Okay, it doesn't mean a hundred percent, but predominantly in-person, so the majority of their students are in-person. We, if you look, it's one, one week in the rear. We are, the week of the twenty, nineteen through the twenty-third, a little bit higher than the week before, in the fifties. You might have heard some schools have had to close due to staffing issues or cases, but we were at fifty-three percent on that week. There was a slight increase of fully in-person and a, also a slight increase in fully remote. Again, we know of some districts that are in towns that are now red. So the decisions were made in that community to, in some of those communities to scale back for two weeks into more of a remote for some of their schools, which pulled them out of the predominantly fully in-person. Those conversations continue to happen daily between superintendents and local health directors. And by and large, superintendents want kids in school, health directors want kids in school. Everyone wants children in school because we know that's where they learn best. But factors around the community and mitigation strategies in the schools also are factored into that. Next slide, please. Last week, the last month, there was a lot of conversation about the Blue Ribbon Schools, and you had an opportunity to, to have them listed during our meeting, but I agree, I think it was Stella that mentioned it, you know, it didn't really give it justice. It didn't give it justice. And while we can't have them come present with their children in front of us, we could do something that gives a little bit of flavor of why those schools are so special and what makes them Blue Ribbon Schools. So I think it was that same evening or that same day of the meeting, the last board meeting, I worked with Pete, and Pete worked with the districts to try to get a little snippet from each of those districts so that you could see today, to see why those schools are selected as Blue Ribbon Schools. So I'm going to turn it over now to conclude my report. The video, it's about a ten-minute video that highlights the four schools that were selected to be Blue Ribbon Schools for the state of Connecticut. So can you play the video, please?
Have you ever wondered what makes a school a national Blue Ribbon School? Well, these four winners from Connecticut can tell you. First up, let's hear from GHR School in Coventry about what it takes to become a national Blue Ribbon winner.
Welcome to GHR. We are so proud and honored to be a 2020 National Blue Ribbon School. Our school is amazing. We have a very dynamic community here at GHR. And one of the things that we're really known for is our promotion of kindness. Kindness is part of our CARES philosophy. CARES is an acronym that stands for Cooperation, Assertion, Responsibility, Empathy, and Self-Control. It's something that we really pride ourselves on here at GHR, and we work to promote kindness in different ways throughout the day. Something else that makes our school really unique is how much student ownership we want our kids to take and have leaders, leadership over their own learning. So we do that in a variety of ways, one of which is student-led conferencing every spring. So students work year-long to set their goals in all different academic areas, things like band, other related arts. What are they passionate about? What kind of goals do they want to achieve for themselves? And then throughout the year, they check in with their teacher. They collect evidence. They review their work samples. They compare it to exemplars. And by the spring, they have a really comprehensive portfolio that they can be proud of to share with their family and with their teachers. Something else that we are very proud of here at GHR is our dedication to innovation. We have just adopted Portrait of the Graduate Competencies district-wide, so that runs pre-K-12. And here at GHR, we see our role in fitting in there. We developed two years ago an innovation station in our portable computer lab that really promotes hands-on type of learning with a variety of different technologies. Something else that we were able to do two years ago is start the implementation of Project Lead the Way, and we offer that to all of our fourth graders. So it really does also promote an idea of equity. This year, we were able to secure one-to-one Chromebook, one-to-one devices for all of our students here at GHR. Another way that we're really trying to promote innovation in all of the different things that we do. We also are able to offer Chinese enrichment here for our fifth graders, band. And then lastly, something that we are really proud of is our dedication to math and reading enrichment and intervention. So thank you for coming to visit GHR today. We hope you enjoy your visit.
Northeast Elementary School, Vernon, Connecticut.
Hi, I'm Dr. Brenda Green, Principal of Northeast Elementary School. We're fortunate to be identified as a Category One school, also a school distinction, and now for the National Blue Ribbon School for closing the achievement gap. Here at Northeast, we give students what they need when they need it. It's all about relationships. We have staff, students, the community working together to make a great school. Why don't you come in and take a look and see what's going on?
Well, with that, though, let's pick our today's topic, topic of the day. Samantha, would you like to tip? Nice and loud, Sam. Start working here.
Of all the things you want to learn, what do you think will be the most useful when you learn yourself?
I say, I think that decimals are the most useful because I could use it when I go shopping because basically decimals are the same thing as money, as money.
Okay.
I got sixty-eight.
I got sixty-eight. And we're painting because it's my birthday.
Happy Birthday!
This is the one I've challenged, challenged that I'm down to that, but you guys can go through the most stuff.
South Street Elementary School, Danbury, Connecticut.
Hi, my name is Carmen Bardes Quevara, and I'm the school principal of South Street Elementary School. Welcome to our school. First and foremost, what makes South Street a Blue Ribbon School is the staff and the students. So we have students that are extremely resilient, given everything they've gone through, and we have staff that put our students first. So students come to school wanting to learn, and our staff comes to school wanting to teach.
The ESL team is committed and focuses on helping our students acquire the academic language necessary to close the academic gap. We do this by regularly meeting with the classroom teachers, by grouping our students into fully proficiency groups. We target language instruction to meet their level, and in doing so, we accelerate language acquisition. We believe speaking a second language is a massive, a student's diverse culture enriches the threat of the new American society. At South Street, we truly believe that we grow in many languages.
An important initiative that South Street teachers do is small group instruction. So we use data points such as the STAR test, pre-test from our units of study to pinpoint specific student need, and teachers pull those students during workshop, math, as well as an additional thirty-minute period, which is called the WIN Block, which stands for What I Need.
I think a police officer.
You want to be a police officer? Why?
A president.
You want to be a president?
I want to be a vet.
Why do you want to be a veterinarian? You like to protect animals and the whole world.
I think one of the most significant initiatives that we've done at South Street is our community, really bringing our community together. It takes a village, and in this school, one of the things that everyone that comes and visits says is that we are very welcome at school. At South Street, we look at data. Data is what drives our instruction, and we look at it from many different perspectives. And that data is transparent. It's not about this teacher or that teacher. It's about the students. And we tailor every student's educational plan to fulfill their needs. And I think that's what has made a critical point in our journey. We still have a long way to go. We have a lot of goals in mind, but we are heading in the right direction. We all have a voice in this school, and we all have our opinions and our strengths, but we all have one goal, and that is to provide the best education for our students to succeed.
Norton Elementary School, Cheshire, Connecticut.
At Norton School, we celebrate students every day. We value relationships which fosters a positive culture and an environment where students want to come to school to learn. Norton staff members are dedicated to providing a comprehensive educational program that meets the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. Combined our rigorous curriculum and Cheshire performance standards, prepare and encourage our students to be collaborative, cooperative learners, community contributors, complex and creative thinkers, effective communicators, and self-directed learners. Honoring the importance of each child's social, emotional, and academic well-being, we employ responsive classroom practices to create safe, joyful, and engaging classrooms. With these environments set in place, teachers engage students in learning focused on our rigorous Cheshire Public Schools curriculum and the Common Core State Standards. Through high-leverage strategies such as individual conferencing, student inquiry and discourse, and data-driven decision-making, our teachers personalize student learning using rich tasks that promote complex thinking. It is through the establishment of responsive classroom environments, a personalized approach to learning, and a deep commitment to data-driven decision-making that our students reach high academic, social, and emotional achievements. Students at Norton have a prominent role as leaders in our community. Students feel supported, are taught the skills they need to be collaborative learners and community contributors, and feel a sense of ownership for the well-being of our school. Norton students are leaders of their own learning and our school culture. Our student leaders actively pursue community service projects and lead our monthly town meetings to celebrate student work. They also assist with morning announcements, kindness, and gratitude campaigns, and even our daily dismissal procedures. Our students are the heart and soul of Norton and are successful because they believe they can be and they know they are important contributors to our school community. To ensure every student thrives and contributes as a positive caring member of our school community, we use our Soaring Pillars to guide us. We show integrity, own our own learning, accept responsibility, and respect ourselves, others, and property. These pillars set a clear vision and allow our students to soar high each and every day. We are the Norton Night Hawks. We soar as learners, citizens, and as good friends to all.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay, good. I see smiles. I love that. I see smiles. And, you know, that video was, I think we all needed that, right? You know, I, I think what you see here are threads of great schools and Blue Ribbon Schools. But I think one thing that this video, when I first saw it, and I wanted to share this with you because I think it's really important, you know, one thing we're not able to measure, there's no test for, is the social-emotional importance that school plays. And we know that when students were not in school since March, it had an impact on their social-emotional well-being. And through every one of those videos, the highlight of why they wear a Blue Ribbon School is because they showed a sense of community, caring about one another. How about that little kid who, they're painting because it's his birthday, and everybody clapped for him? And the ring around the rosy around the tree. There's so much of that going on in the state of Connecticut because of the hard work of our educators to try to get students in school. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, congratulate the Blue Ribbon Schools, and just bring out the fact that, you know, what we're not able to measure, but what we can see in that video is the importance of community in our schools in Connecticut. And I just want to acknowledge those schools and congratulate them on being Blue Ribbons. That concludes the Commissioner's report. Thank you.
Alan, can I ask the Commissioner to maybe have a video of the Teacher of the Year and the Professional of the Year just talking a little bit about it? Because I think it does, oh my, it's so wonderful that you chose this school. It really makes such a big difference. So thank you.
Happy to them.
I also wanted to add the joy of the children. If you saw their, their reflections, you know, there's a sense of, I'm enjoying education. At that, at that age, that's so important, that learning can be fun. So, and I, and I like the walkie-talkie. I mean, that was, that was very creative. I'm gonna, I'm gonna probably do that with my husband at home once in a while. Are you there?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Chair has no report. Kathy.
Ms. Chair Taylor, please ask for a motion.
Ah, yes, we have a motion on a day. Don't move. Just a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, you're on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. I hit the wrong button this time. someday, right? We'll all have this down pat. I just don't know when. Good evening, Board Members. I'm just going to take you through a quick overview of the budget process and the budget options that you have before you. I know that several questions were raised at the last meeting, and I'm sorry I was unable to join you. I did have a chance to I did have a chance to go to, before the Legislative and Policy Committee, right before this, and answer some of the questions that their members had. But as I said, I'll do a quick overview and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Since we have so many new members, a brief overview of the budget process itself. Part one you did in September, and that was when you approved our current services budget. All current services is what will be the cost over the next two years of continuing operations as they are. And so that was kind of easy to do. Part two of the budget process is the options process. And this is a process, actually both are, that every state agency undergoes. So it is certainly not unique to the department. And essentially, the instructions come from the Office of Policy and Management around three potential areas of policy changes. One, there's a requirement to submit reduction options. In light of the current pandemic and the concerns about the state's revenue in the coming months, each agency was required to submit a ten percent reduction option. The second area that they potentially allow is opportunities for us to reallocate funding between accounts. And the final area that you could potentially submit an option is an expansion option. This year, they were not contemplating expansion options. So as we're developing the options budget to meet OPM's requirement, we kind of take an overall look at the areas that the department is committed to ensuring that there's funding consistency. And so we start first, as I mentioned earlier in the Legislative Committee, with our internal staffing. You know, so we want to make sure that we are able to continue to be able to pay for the staff that we have to provide the supports to the districts, or in the case of the technical high schools, as Mr. Trifry knows, that they have the teachers and the staff needed in each of the schools. The second area we look at is, you know, how can we protect a large amount of resources that go to our local school districts to support the cost of education? Our largest entitlement is the Education Cost Sharing Grant, it's a little over $2 billion. We are not recommending a reduction in that account. The Statutorily ECS is being phased into full, what they consider full funding. Over a ten-year period, that phase in will be complete in 2028. So our budget includes the next two years of increases for phased-in funding. And that funding is mainly supports our neediest districts. So that's who's seeing increases. So we felt that that was very important. We also tried to protect entitlement accounts by keeping them level funded to this year. So when you approved the current services budget in September, I'll give you an example. The special education excess cost line item, you saw that there was a $60 million increase in order for us to fully fund in accordance with the statute, that particular line item. That line item pays for current costs associated with students, special education students who are very high need and have the highest costs. In order to fully fund that, we would need to add $60 million to that particular line item. So as part of our reduction options, what we did is, and we recommended that in those entitlement accounts, which would have seen an increase to reach their full statutory funding, we recommended that they be reduced to be funded at least at the current level so that no district would see a loss in revenue associated with these options. And, you know, the third thing that we took a look at is updating in choice enrollment. And I know that was one of the concerns that was raised. So we actually did a review, a historical review of choice program enrollment, and then a estimate based upon what we were hearing from the field as to what the programs were seeing for this year due to the pandemic. And so the adjustments that were taken, and we took adjustments as part of current services and then in the options process to the technical high schools and to the BoAg schools. The adjustments were designed so that they would not impact the enrollment levels of the schools, which I know is very important to the board members, that students have access to choice programming. So in the, for the technical high schools, the reduction actually was removing the $2.5 million that we had asked for in current services to fund world language teachers. It goes along with a corresponding legislative proposal to eliminate the requirement that the technical high school students, graduates need to have a world language. So it did not reduce their appropriation below the level that was requested in, to meet all of their needs, including collective bargaining needs. So in addition to the reduction options, we are seeking a couple of reallocation options, one of which is just purely technical. When they created the chef transportation account a couple of years ago, they created that account by taking choice transportation funding for the chef region from various accounts, including the magnet account, Open Choice. They did not take the full amount from the magnet school account. So last year, we had to move money in order to be able to make the appropriate payments, and we'll have to this year. So we're seeking that reallocation as part of the upcoming biennium so that the funds are reflected in the correct account. The other reallocation that we are seeking, and this is something that's near and dear to the Commissioner's heart, is in our bilingual education line item. We have an entitlement grant for bilingual education that's funded at a little bit over $3 million. And based on a statutory set aside, we are supposed to direct about $1.2 million of those funds towards pilot programs that ceased being in existence in 2015. And so what has happened since then is that the funding, that $1.2 million lapses and goes back to the general fund at the end of the year. So, and in order to provide better services and more direct assistance to districts that are seeing increases in their L populations, we are requesting that that money be transferred to a new account that would give the department more flexibility and discretion in providing that direct assistance to districts. And I don't know, Commissioner, if you wanted to say anything about that because I know that was a very important thing for you.
I think, you know, you covered it. It really is an area that I think has historically been under-supported. And if you look at our data over the last 10, 15 years, you could see that. So what we want to do is make sure that we're shoring it up a little bit to make sure that the standards and the implementation of programming is based on what research says is good for these students. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the last item where we were suggesting a reallocation, and I know this was something that raised questions, had to do with repurposing funding that was no longer going to be needed for the two charter schools in Stanford that had closed over the last two years, and repurposing a portion of those funds to allow for the expansion of the Stanford Charter School for Excellence to include middle school grades. I'm sure that you guys remember in, at the July, I believe it was the July meeting, the school was before the board and they were seeking that expansion. And, you know, frankly, it put everybody in a very awkward position because the funding was not available for the board to actually take action to approve expansion of the grades. And so one of your directions to the school and to us was essentially that they needed to follow the process. And so part of the process, and actually the first step in the process, is for us to request funding as part of our budgetary proposal to OPM. And then if that funding manages to survive the governor's budget and the legislative session, then at that time, the state board would be able to have the opportunity to vote on whether or not, based upon the educational opportunities that school offers, that was something that you wanted to do. But it put the, kind of right in the horse. And then I know that there was finally, in regards to a question of timing about the submission to OPM. So the submission dates to OPM for the budget are guided by statute. They typically are literally several days before the state board meets. So the department has always submitted the budget proposals in accordance with meeting the statutory requirements. However, it goes over with the caveat that when the board meets, if there are adjustments, then we will be submitting the adjustments over to OPM. And so we just, so you are really approving it and it is really based upon your wishes. It's really, it's a timing issue. And I think I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions people have.
Anybody have any questions? Bonnie. We can't hear you.
Yeah, sure. So Kathy, I do want to publicly thank you for answering all the questions. You and I spent quite a bit of time on the phone. And I do want to thank you very much for all of your patience in all of my questioning. I do want to let the rest of my board members know, I do remain very troubled with regards to the multimillion-dollar reduction for our technical schools and agri-science schools. I think that there truly does need to be a very hard discussion regarding equity in school choice with regards to the amount per pupil that we're spending. And it's my hope that in the next year, that we can really wrap our hands around that and start to work even harder to try to find that equity so that all students are afforded the same opportunities when they do school choice. But Kathy, I do want to acknowledge, I would not want to be in your shoes for anything as you helped to balance, the State Department of Ed balanced the budget and had to make the cuts that need to be cut. You have my greatest admiration for that. But again, I do remain troubled because of the cost per pupil. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody else? Kathy, I, once in a while, do write something in the ordinary course of business that kind of makes my head go like that. And so I'm just curious about this note that the legislature is appropriating funds for activities that were limited to being carried out in 2015 and 2016. I assume we pointed that out to them and say we're putting this together?
So we pointed it out over several years and have just not been successful in getting them to either remove the restriction so we could distribute the funds through the entitlement grant, or as the Commissioner's seeking here, actually, you know, remove that funding to somewhere else where we can, again, get it to the districts. So yes, we all scratched our heads.
Is this because there's somebody on the committee who is hoping the sections will be restored? Or do you just have no idea what, why?
You know, I'm honestly not sure. I know Laura has brought it up to, brought it to their attention now for several years and we haven't really received a response that would indicate what the resistance is.
Okay. Put it onto the list.
We'll continue advocating for ensuring that the scarce resources are aimed at providing the best outcome for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of 8A? Okay, looks like it's any opposition? Thank you. And I think that takes us to the consent agenda. Have a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda. That's Karen.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Alan, I think Malia had her hand up. I was just said in favor. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Miguel, we're on to item 10.
I also with consent agenda. So, you know, I went for discussion. I asked Ajit Gopalakrishnan and Desi Nethman to provide some updates based on inquiries from members of our board. And I just want to preface the first one, the attendance and enrollment. You heard, last month, we were working on developing a model. You know, I'll be very, very frank, the model wrapped up. It was done by like 3:15 today. And the analysis that you're gonna be receiving today literally was done a couple of, I don't know if Ajit has slept in last week, really trying to get this ready for today's meeting. So I want to acknowledge not only Ajit and the performance team for their remarkable work, but also I want to acknowledge districts. We're asking districts to do things that they haven't had to do before during a pandemic while they're trying to keep schools open. We're asking for information on a regular basis so that we could ensure that we're doing everything we can in our power to keep kids engaged and keep them in school. So she's gonna provide a high-level overview of the report that I said. I read it for the first time about an hour and a half before a meeting. And I got some preliminary data earlier than that, but I just want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, we wanted districts to be ready for you tonight. So Ajit's gonna give an overview of it. It's an overview of the attendance and enrollment. And then Desi's gonna follow up right after with an update on New Haven in particular and some of the developments since our last meeting. I'll turn it over now to Ajit.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll do a brief update on two reports that we are releasing today. One has to do with our enrollment and the other has to do with monthly attendance, like the Commissioner mentioned. We have stood up systems and processes like never before. I'll speak briefly to the enrollment first. We knew from the weekly data we were collecting on learning models that overall enrollment seemed down. And those were aggregates we were getting from districts, a little down. And so when we collected the first batch of preliminary October PSIS data, which is the student-level data, we quickly set out to do a more deeper dive to see where was the decline, which districts, that type of thing. So just some high-level points. Our overall enrollment seems to be down about three percent from last year to this year. So about 527,000, 28,000, about 512,000 in that vicinity. So about a 15,000 student fewer. More than 50% of this decline is due to enrollment, lower enrollment in pre-K, pre-kindergarten, and kindergarten. Those are the two grades that are accounting for more than 50%. If we add first and second grade, it actually comes up to around 60% of the decline in enrollment is attributable to that. We also looked at a rough cohort persistence approach just to see year-on-year. We also looked at a rough cohort persistence approach just to see year over, you know, last year's first graders to this year's second graders, the second, the third, sort of this rough cohort approach to calculate sort of persistence rates. And persistence rates were slightly lower across, uh, across the grades. And then we dug into that a little bit more. And there are a couple of patterns that we see in addition to pre-KK. We have fewer new students who seem to be enrolling than we might have expected in a normal year in, in all the grades. And we also saw a, a, a substantial increase in between June, end of last school year and October, a, a substantial increase in the percent of families opting to homeschool children. So we saw about 3,000 more students opting to homeschool their uh children compared to what during the similar timeframe last year, it was about 550. So it went from 550 to about 3,500, like a 3,000 uh person increase. Uh, the decline in enrollment is about um, I think about two thirds of it is in our alliance districts, our 33 uh lowest performing districts. The pre-KK declines are also in, in those districts is what we're seeing. The, the, the chunk of the decline is in those districts or bigger rates of decline is in those districts. And uh, and just one point, this is, this is still very preliminary based on the preliminary data from the October PSI. So things could shift, um, but this is our first um sort of analysis attempt at this. So we just wanted to share that with you. Uh, these reports will be posted on Ed site and there's also um, and we'll, we'll send links to that. Uh, the second uh commissioner, is that, is that good or did you want to add anything? Or, or deputy commissioner, anything at this point?
No, thank, thank you. I mean, there's a lot of information to um take in. I, I invite you to read the report really carefully. I think what, what Ajit um nice, you know, put, put very nicely is the decline, we're, we're finding early K, pre-K being the areas where um families made the decision in the fall. Because if you recall, you know, the, the, the school reopening, there was a lot of question about whether to send their children to school. They chose to keep their children home and register them the following year. So that, that made up a good percentage of it. Um, as far as alliance districts, you know, that's, it's not surprising, but it's concerning, right? So we want to make sure that students that are in these districts have more opportunities to, to get good access to high quality learning. Um, but we found that consistent with parent choice um in, in, in those districts, many parents chose to keep their children home. Um, we're also finding that um in, in those same places, uh, the uh pre-K and K decisions to keep their children home was higher. So I think, you know, two thirds out of um the alliance districts and the alliance districts, I believe has 40% of our school population. So, you know, it's critically important that underlying the report, we can see the importance of why we have to get these data because um we have to act on these data as a state. And um, uh, you know, I look forward to those conversations as well. Thank you, Ajit.
Thank you. And just to also add the, the increase in homeschooling, that was actually evidenced in non-alliance districts. So that's where the increase is, is there. And just one other point, when we look at that persistence rate from one grade to the next, historically for like the last five cycles, that rate is around one or a little over one. So we have about the same number of students or slightly more students. This year in the early grades, one through seven or so, it's, it's actually less than one and a little less than one. So it, it really tells us that consistently, our students have been coming back year over year. And, and the pandemic is really, really the reason for this sort of slight, slight dip. So I just wanted to put that, uh, put that out. Uh, so the second uh report that we're releasing today stems from actually the resolution that you passed, the board passed in August that allowed for um hybrid and remote day, remote days to count as student attendance days. And you charged us to actually make sure that students were attending. So we set up systems for data collection. We set up a weekly system for tracking before we had the October PSI S data. And then we also set up a, in parallel to the October student count, we set up a parallel uh student level monthly attendance count. So it was a brand new application was developed. Again, uh, I could name 10 people in performance who have done different aspects of this work. Um, and, and it was a, it was a brand new system and kudos to the districts. They were able to get us first month's attendance uh data. And as with any new collection, important thing to remember is that, you know, when, when data collection systems mature, we actually, the, the data quality improves. So this is like our first effort. So I think we've got to remember that. The other thing is that um, this is, we have this notion of remote attendance. So in addition to just taking attendance on a regular day, we have this notion of remote attendance. And what do we mean by in attendance? We're actually going back to the state board's definition. We're staying consistent with that, which is the student must be there for at least half the school day. So in an in-person day, uh, you, you can imagine uh what a half a school day looks like. Uh, but in a remote day, we actually have to uh create uh guidance on how to take attendance on remote days. And, and that is an ongoing refinement process. We, we allow for both live classes and meetings like what we're doing now, but we also allow for asynchronous, meaning the student does work offline, submits it, and then the teacher reviews it and says, okay, this is good. And, and based on that, there's a determination made that there's enough work completed that, that it is at least worth, quote, half a day of uh school. And so the kid is marked as present, as a remote present. So districts had to set up technical systems, their student information systems had to be changed to kind of track all these things. So uh, so that, just wanted to mention that and, and, you know, we're all learning from it. Um, we very quickly, as we put out this policy, learned of slightly different ways in which districts are sort of making this happen. So we stepped in with technical assistance, clarifications. So I think all that sort of uh imperfection, if you will, is baked into the first month's data collection. And we just, we've urged caution with, with the public and the press as well in interpreting this data. Not to go too crazy with it, it's a good starting point for sort of understanding where things are. So I'll probably talk more about the caveats than the actual what we're seeing. So what we're actually seeing is that students um who do not have any of our quote high need uh factors, they're not English learners, they're not students with disabilities and um uh or a student with a disability, and they're not a student from a low income family. If they're not any one of those three, if they're not any of those three things, uh, you know, then those students actually have very similar attendance rates to what they had last year. So the September attendance rate was similar to what the attendance rate was for last year for those students who don't have any of these high need factors. Uh, and just one other point, we don't have last year's September to compare to because this is a brand new thing. So the only thing we have really is last year's kind of full year thing. So, so we, we looked at September and compared it to, to last year's full attendance up until mid-March when we went to fully remote. So we, we compared that attendance for non-high need students looks, uh, looks comparable. For high, uh, students with high needs, uh, the rates are lower in September. And what we also see is that students who have uh multiple high need factors, meaning an English learner who is also identified as a student with a disability, their rates, or if you're a, a student eligible for free meals and you're an English learner. When you put those multiple factors together, the rates are, are even lower. So just to give you an example, the attendance rates are uh, you know, for students with mul, the multiple uh factors, if you will, the lowest attendance rate we see is about 84%, 83.8, 84%. So even those students who have significant challenges on average are attending about 84% of the days. Now, we don't like that rate, we want it to be higher, obviously. Uh, but just to sort of put the, put what we're seeing in context. And I'll defer to uh Charlene and Desi to um, and commissioner, is, is that appropriate? To sort of speak to the, uh, some of the supports that are in the works here?
Sure.
Can I ask a question, Ajit? Can I ask a question? Uh, the decline in, in the, in younger children, isn't that also part of the decline in demographics of the state? Is that, no, why not?
No, it's a, it's a, we, uh, we also looked at birth records uh for the 2016 and 17 and 18 uh live birth numbers from DPH. Um, and again, this goes back to kind of historically how we've been trending. The, our pre-K and kindergarten numbers, our kindergarten numbers are really close to the birth la, uh, numbers from four years ago. So kindergarten, usually we have about 36,000 students. This year we're at about 32,000 change. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a noticeable uh difference. Yep.
May, may I ask a question about uh homeschooling? Uh, what are the, are there any, what are the rules and regulations about homeschooling? Is there state oversight of homeschooling? How does that work?
So uh, feel free, anyone on our team that wants to jump in also. They have to notify us um that they're going to be homeschooling. Um, and districts do participate in reviews of, you know, homeschooling programming. Um, uh, however, it's not required. Um, and you know, parents often are, are good about doing that. Um, what we're, what we're hoping however, is that once we've um, you know, had experiences in our schools and we see that the spread is not happening in schools, some of these families will uh consider bringing their students back uh to school and taking advantage of either brick and mortar uh schoolhouses or at least a remote learning option. But um i, to, to respond to your question, um, there isn't as much oversight in that as there is in the remote learning that is uh provided by, by school systems.
I thought that it as education was compulsory. So how is, isn't it, uh, just curious how that works?
I see uh the, the bright light of Jessa's uh camera came up, so she's ready to answer that.
Here I am.
Yeah.
Yes, and hopefully my, my daughter won't burst in behind me. But um, yes, I mean, the commissioner is correct that there's, there's relatively limited oversight in Connecticut. There is the, the parents are obligated to ensure that they are meeting a certain minimum expectation for providing education to their children. So that is um sort of the, the check and balance for that. But I do think it's also important to acknowledge and understand that there's a difference between homeschooling and folks who are keeping their kids home for the remote learning. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. The homeschooled children, again, correct, are, are um withdrawn from, from the school and are completely receiving educational opportunities from their families. And they are in fact obligated to provide educational opportunities that are comparable to the experience that the children receive at school. But Connecticut, I mean, it has been a headline, has relatively limited um oversight as to what exactly that entails.
Thank you. Bob?
Justin, is that, does that fall to the, you know, the, the education establishment to monitor that? Or has it become a DCF issue if somebody's, if a child is not getting education?
Certainly, it could depend on the approach that was taken, depending on the circumstances. I think it's pretty fact specific. Um, the, the state board of education is responsible for enforcing the statutes and regulations around education. So arguably, if there was an indication of a widespread issue related to homeschooling, that might come to the board. Um, certainly if it was something that had to do with DCF, um, you know, or concerns about the children, um, you know, not being cared for appropriately, appropriately at home, you know, that could go to DCF. But again, um, it is, it is an interesting topic, perhaps one we could take on. Oops. Here, my, my child, uh, I, I, my child's breaking in here. But yeah, perhaps on one that we could take on, it is very interesting and um depending on the state.
We'll let you go back to homeschooling.
I apologize.
No need, please don't apologize. We want a guest appearance next month, please. Um, she's adorable, she would definitely make you all smile. Um, so I hope that answers your question. We're happy to uh continue. If you have any other questions, just let us know, happy to answer.
Thank you. Desi, I believe you're on now.
Alan, can you, can you say that again?
You're on.
Oh, oh. I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry. So um as Ajit mentioned earlier, um, there's a number of supports that um we have provided and that we will continue to provide going forward to support the districts around these issues. Uh, Charlene and I, I, actually, we have a meeting coming up with the opportunity district superintendent to talk about um this particular issue and some of the technical assistance that can come out of the SDE um so that we can work with districts around this. Um, again, Ajit mentioned in, in his, in his report, no major surprises here in terms of where we need to focus our efforts. And we have systems set up to do, to do that and to provide these supports. So we're going to continue to do that.
Thank you. Anybody have any? Charlene?
Yeah, I was just going to add and thank you, Alan. Uh, for our newer board members, you will pretty soon hear us talk about goal one of our board plan. And uh, as some of you know, that attendance is one of the metrics that we monitor under goal one of our state board plan. Uh, with a myriad of initiatives that support that work. So uh, you know, when school uh closed in, in March, we recognized that engagement and attendance was going to be something we needed to pay attention to. And so we started lifting up, uh, building new processes uh to make sure that we were addressing that. Learning from districts, our alliance districts, continuing our, our peer learning network effort to hear from districts and so they could share best practices. In addition to working with DCF, I know uh Mr. Exon talked about, uh, mentioned homeschooling, but also the issue of monitoring child's safety and wellbeing during this time. And so we, we've worked with and continue to work with DCF uh in some of these issues. So we have a, a list of uh system supports uh around this issue of uh attendance and engagement. And we certainly will spend time uh in the not-too-distant future sharing some of that information with you. But the data that we're now receiving just really allows us to zero in more closely on where the supports are needed and the level of supports that, that are needed. We're working with national experts uh as attendance works as well uh around these issue and, and staff really zeroing in uh on using this data to provide supports. What are the interventions uh that we can work with and support districts with? Uh, and included.
I want to just add to what Charlene just said because, you know, it, it's not just, it, it's the district piece, but it's also making sure that these supports get down to a family level. And that is something that Charlene and I are very focused on to make sure that we're providing support to both districts and directly to families around this issue.
Thank you, Malia.
Thanks, Charlene. Since you, you um spoke up, I thought it seems like a good opportunity to ask about um, you know, how we, how we monitor the, the, I think a middle ground between the, the metrics that we've talked about so far, which is on my mind lately in terms of the, the um mental health of our students and the impact of, of the, their mental health on their ability to um, to learn and, and connect and participate fully. Um, so it seems like there's something between attendance um and, you know, it's sort of like the extremes, right? Like they, they may still be showing up, but are they actually able to, to complete the task, so to speak?
Uh, perfect question, Malia. Uh, so not disconnected from this is a social emotional wellbeing, thinking about trauma, thinking about mental health. Uh, and how do we support kids and families uh in this space? And, you know, Desi, that we're, we're hearing directly from community partners who are sharing information about some of the challenges that children and families are, are experiencing. So in addition to, we are kind of a trilogy of supports that we're working on, uh, helping families to think about what does this remote learning look like? How can they support or how can they feel? Um, I, I know we've heard from families saying, I feel like I'm failing my children because I can't help them. Uh, you know, so what does that look like? And, and certainly for the kids themselves and our educators in that space, I would support them. Uh, truly important. So we, we are working in that. As a matter of fact, uh, we're meeting tomorrow with a group, we're calling our child wellbeing team with our providers, uh, of um local providers of, of community supports and, and, and DSS to talk about behavioral health supports uh for our children and educators. And how do we leverage our, our providers in this space? And how do we think about funding of that support uh as well? So that's all a part of the kind of the continuum of supports that we're working on. I, I'll just give you another example. And we heard from a, a, a community provider saying, you know, student was having a hard time, like, run in the house and put the blankets off. Basically, it said, you need to get on line. Basically, it said, you need to get online. It was a remote learning day. And somehow the first class was canceled and he thought he was done for the day, right? Like, I'm done, right? No more schools for the rest of the day. So how do we help families to even understand what this means uh and then provide those supports? So it's all of those things, Malia, that we're working on uh with our districts and partners.
And if I could also add to to Malia's question, another piece to all of this is that the technology is is a key piece. And I think it's important to remember, you know, our our technology and our devices have started arriving in October. This report is based on September, so we know we have families that were were having issues connecting and and being able to participate. So that's that's another real piece that I just want to put in here as we we think about the the September uh information that Ajit shared too.
Speaking of embracing families, um, Jess, I'm gonna ask you to have her say hello again, please. You know, we we had a little cameo, uh, just there she is.
Like a mask.
Beautiful mask, hi, Lisha. So it, you know, I think it's really important too that we recognize that, you know. So when our attorney's on and she's dealing with, you know, what she has to deal with, we embrace the realities that this is what our families are facing. The fact that the first thirty five minutes of our call today, we were ready to pull our hair out and say, okay, I got other things to do. Why isn't this not working? I want. That's what our our families are facing. And we have the ability to have somebody behind the scenes fixing it for us and telling us what to do and what not to do. We're really dealing with those real issues. And I just again want to commend, you know, um, the districts and our our performance team for saying, we're going to set up systems that are going to show all the words and pimples. So that we can start working on them and saying, how are we going to address it? Whether it's working with families and helping them build their capacity, working with districts to make sure that those students who were finding are the most disengaged but the neediest. That we're doing, we're standing up supports now and we're partnering with districts. So um, you know, as sobering as the data is, for me, it's like we're ready to roll up our sleeves now that we know what we're seeing. And it's really about making sure that we're responsive to our districts and most importantly, responsive to our families who, right now, you know, are still in crisis in many ways. Now, families shouldn't have to choose between, you know, uh, if they make a decision for their family to keep their children home, we still have to find ways to provide good public education for them. But I recognize that many districts now are two months into providing two school systems. The in-person and the virtual, that hasn't gotten lost on me, that every district in Connecticut has had to develop a an online system, something that they never had before. So how do we support the districts too? Getting these data out there, breaking it up by disaggregating it is really the first step to making sure that we're responsive to the needs of Connecticut. And I know Charlene, who's done work nationally um with attendance work, is ready to roll up her sleeves. And and Desi, in his work with turnaround and his work as a principal, he knows how to best support districts. So I'm looking forward to um this challenging work ahead for our agency. Sorry, I got inspired by the a student that just popped up and said hello.
And I think we're all inspired by the work that all of you are doing in this totally unprecedented situation. So thank you. Martha, you had something?
I just wanted to comment, and I think the most sobering statistic that I heard for me was the early childhood numbers, the pre-school and kindergarten. That this is a leading indicator, and I know there's more data to come. I fear that, you know, that's what this is only one year. We don't know what next year is going to be. So we definitely don't want kids who missed out on pre-K and K and then what are, you know, how is that going to impact them on the long term? Um, I know your team and also the early childcare office will be on it, but that's something that, you know, I look forward to hearing more about how we can tackle this. And offer a program that, you know, it's going to make sense for them if it has to be tweaked, because I think those are also the students that have the some of the hardest times going virtual. You know, five-year-old in front of an iPad is really hard to have something effective. But if they missed out on two, you know, two years of schooling, that's going to have a big impact as well.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you. Any anybody else?
I I wanted to allude to what Martha, um, I was what was going through my mind, and I wanted to comment, especially the students that are on a five oh four plan. You know, as we know, if 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 the assignments don't get get started at the beginning, there's it's like a spiral effect, no assignments at all. So I really think that uh that that we have to pay close attention to students who are in a five or four plan. Very important, because, you know, if we're hearing the numbers and 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 Martha, you're correct, because we have nothing to compare. As 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 uh Ajit or Charlene or someone mentioned about, you know, there's nothing from last year because of COVID starting in the mid of March. But that would be a good a good um assessment at the end to be able to compare the numbers and see if maybe these num- these numbers don't continue to decline. Because we want to see more of, you know, we want to see more perfection when it comes to all of our students getting access to education.
Yeah, I just, you know, it reminds me of a few years ago, the especially the superintendents were quite interested in this. I think it was competency-based uh education as opposed to seat time. And uh you're you're we're kind of in the intersection of that again. Where you're trying to measure seat time understandably. And uh but you also have the competency base. You you also have to look at competency too. You can be in the seat a long time but not be competent, be competent not be in the seat as much. So I'm I'm sure you'll be taking that into consideration as you look at, how do you how do you measure this? And what's what's fair? What's fair measurement?
Definitely. You know, I think we're in the process now, not to get too nuanced or in the weeds here, but of identifying those standards that we feel kids should know, right? If if you're not in the seat as much, what are the power standards or, you know, the the priority standards that we need to make sure children get at each age? So that that's happening um at the agency as well in the academic office. So thanks for acknowledging that.
Anything else? Thank you. Bob? Bob, you're muted apparently.
Thanks. This is kind of the end of the agenda. I know we're kind of between you and CNN uh to find out what's what's been going on. But the uh, I can, I tell you, it's no different than it was an hour and a half ago. The it's been an interesting year for the technical high school system. You in your materials that came out before the meeting, you got a copy of the annual report, which was really well done. I just have to kind of brag on this. This is a, this whole thing was done in-house. You know, with the produced, you know, done with our staff and then produced by the students. And it's a it's high-class work. Jeff Whibley should be joining us shortly. Hopefully, he'll be able to to pop in. I'll wander around a little bit until he gets here. The uh, if somebody can make sure they let him know to come on the. I'm sorry?
I'm on, Mr. Teck.
Oh, good, good. It's been a year of challenges, both the both the pandemic uh and. You know, the I just appreciate a lot of the work that the superintendent and the staff and the teachers. And the the community has done to make all this work. So that Jeff's going to talk about some of the, a few of the accomplishments. We are working toward the sep- we're all in admission to that, we're working toward the separation of the agents into a separate agency in two thousand twenty-two. And one of the other things we're taking on this year is inclusion and equity. With the with some work on the board and within the district to make sure that we're we are being sensitive to that and doing the right things. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Jeff to give you a bit of a summary.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Jafry. Thank you, Chairman Taylor and and board members. Uh, I I'm going to just take you through our our annual report packet quickly. And I'll be respectful of your time tonight. So I'm just going to take you straight through to page six of our packet and give you some of our key annual statistics. We continue to offer trade areas in twelve different clusters. And we have uh two two new trades uh that bring us up to a grand total of thirty-one trades across our twenty schools and locations uh in the state. We're currently sitting at about ten thousand eight hundred and seventy high school-aged students. Fifty-nine percent are male and forty percent are female. We have twelve hundred and one full-time faculty. We're very proud that last year we upped our students enrolled in college courses uh up a little bit over a thousand. Just checking, uh, moving over to page eight, you'll see we have over six hundred uh business partners uh in in commerce and industry across the state. And we listed all of them there in our our annual report. This is where our kids are doing shadowing, internships, work-based learning, and also folks who participate in our curriculum advisory councils. As we had shared with you last year, we have, we're we're in our, this is our second year of three of our our current strategic operating plan. And our plan is broken into five goal areas. Culture, climate, and instruction is goal one. Industry alignment alignment is goal two. Access and opportunities is is uh goal area three. Creating systems of excellence is goal area four. And improving our human capital is is goal area five. So I'm gonna go all the way down to page eleven with you to highlight our goal one, which is culture, climate, instruction. Specifically, our goal one is to cultivate and sustain safe, effective collaborative schools for for staff and students. And and last year, highlighting our work, some of the things, our our district leaders and teachers and students. Began work on addressing cultural competency across the district. And we partnered with the Connecticut Center for School Change, as well as the National Conference for Community Justice. Where we included, like I said, all three levels, our our kids, our our teachers and our leaders in in developing culturally competent structures moving forward. And that's something that we're going to work hard on over the course of the next couple of years. We also uh began working hard on developing a guaranteed and viable curriculum where we develop multi-tiered systems of support. And we also continued to work on in in developing effective uh leadership structures with the Connecticut Center of School Change. Building uh internal capacities for our school leaders. Going down to goal two, industry and alignment for collaboration, which starts on page thirteen. This is where we collaborate with key regional employees to enhance and expand statewide efforts to develop curriculum and and career pathways. Last year, we continued to improve our career and college readiness outcomes for students with increasing work-based learning. We we had the goal of increasing work-based learning for last year. And we were on track to actually increase work-based learning by fifty percent and blow that goal away before the COVID uh outbreak hit in in March. So we parlayed our increase of thirty-six percent the year before with an additional sixteen percent last year. We also, important to note, that our students generated a hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars worth of student workforce workforce revenue. This is where kids are actually building garages for clients, uh, you know, you know, uh, the working on, you know, machine projects. Going out in the community and and doing electrical work, taking internal uh jobs, repairing uh automotives and so forth. This was an increase of three point three percent over last year. And that's, it doesn't sound like it's that much, but it is, because that was before we went out on the pandemic. So we did have a three percent increase even uh before the the pandemic. So the kids were on par to have a a big year there as well. And it's important to note, every single penny of that hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars generated in workforce revenue goes right back into the classroom to buy materials. Equipment for uh for the kids. So the money that they earn stays inside of their own program. Quickly shifting down to goal three, access and opportunities. We uh expanded career readiness opportunities for kids where we added an additional nine advanced placement courses across the district. For our our kids to be taking AP courses, which is something new that we hadn't done, uh, you know, before. We also increased adult learning opportunities uh with a thirteen point five percent enrollment increase of our adult learners over the year before. And I I mentioned this last month, and it's it's so important that we'll we'll mention it again. We enrolled four hundred and sixty-three special education students last school year, which uh which was another substantial increase over the previous year. Where uh, you know, uh, this year, we're we're looking at a a sixteen percent prevalence rate. We continued to become uh more and more inclusive of as as a system and provide more and more opportunities to kids across the state of Connecticut. Something that we're extremely proud of, and we want to make sure that we work hard to continue that trend. Moving to goal four, our systems of excellence, something that we really wanted to work uh quite a bit on redesigning CTECs. To facilitate flexible, innovative, and responsive education to achieve success as a new independent agency in the future. We're working hard to develop our organizational systems and we're we're staffing up to be able to stand on our feet independently for a full year. So it's as if we have training wheels so that our, you know, that that the Department of Ed can continue to support us for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, for a full year with our own staff. Learning uh, learning how to be independent while we have our our colleagues at the Department of Ed, making sure that we continue to do things the right way. And our last of the five goals is human capital, which includes recruiting, hiring, developing, and retaining a diverse and high-quality CTECs workforce. We embarked on three trade teacher recruitment fairs that netted a a substantial number of new hires in various areas, particularly some urban areas in Wattebury and Norwalk. We we also hot, uh, all of our new teachers that were hired last year participated in a new teacher orientation, which is particularly important for us. Because we do have a lot of our teachers come directly from uh trade work sites and go directly into teaching. And we always use the, you know, the little saying that some of our folks literally walk off of the scaffold on Thursday. And into the classroom for the first time as teachers on Friday. So it was, it is important for our human capital system to develop our talent and provide rich professional development for people who are becoming new teachers for the first time. Many times as a as a second career. We also were proud that we enrolled eighteen of our CTECs educators in a special Central Connecticut State University sixth-year education leadership program. So that we're starting to develop more internal leaders amongst our our ranks at CTECs. And and, you know, so these are just some of the 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 few things that we hit on on our goals last year. Share briefly our financial report and and some of that information. And just and and we closed out our our annual report with the coronavirus response timeline to kind of show you what. Where where we were uh across the way of uh our our coronavirus response. So in a matter of time, I'm going to zip my lift and pause if we have any questions at this point.
This is Woody. I just, congratulations on this annual report. It's really tremendous that the students uh did it in-house and it's uh beautiful. And that's uh, I think they're really to be commended for that. And.
I'm sorry, Woody.
Bob, you alluded to this earlier in your remarks. And I noticed in the annual report, it says that uh the organization is moving towards separation from the State Department of Education. Could you talk about that and what that means and implications and significance of that?
Yeah, it right now, the the uh CTE or the technical high schools are an integral part of the State Department of Education. And it's been, there was legislation passed about three years ago or two years ago. It that says we've become a separate agency and the timeline keeps changing as the budget. and the timeline keeps changing as the budget gets tighter. Uh, so right now it would, it would be a separate agency in June of 2022. And what Jeff was saying is that we want to make sure we're, have everything in place for that. So they would be operating in, like an independent agency, but with the full support of the department for the last year or so before that happens.
Is, is that, let me jump in here. Bob, is that something that your board and the system have considered whether you really will benefit by doing? Uh, the legislative champion of that move is no longer there. So if it isn't something that's beneficial to you, I think it probably uh could be set aside.
I think it is still, I think it's still a good thing to do. I mean, I've gone hot and cold on it over the years as we, as we've gone back and forth on this thing. But I think it is a good thing because it gives you a little bit more flexibility. And uh, it also, it's a large system and uh, you know, you got you know, uh, it rivals about the third, or maybe the, some of the larger school districts in the state.
Yeah, I want to comment there, uh, you know, and first of all, um, thank you for the great report and, and the, the, the work that's going on to make that report possible. Um, the, the expansion of the, of, of the CTEC system into making sure that our students are prepared for the jobs of today and tomorrow. And um, to Woody's point, you know, this is something that, that has been planned even before me being commissioner. Um, you know, we affectionately call it a TECIT. Um, and we want to support and we know that their ability to grow and, and, and to continue to grow as a system um, may be a, a bit easier through that. However, it does, it will continue to require legislative support and um support from the governor's office as well.
I wanted to ask the question about um, uh, the coronavirus response as to the SATs. Um, it, are those optional? Like, like it's become around um the state of Connecticut or where, where do we stand? Because you, you do have a high achievers of students that are attending post-secondary education. So can, Bob, can you give us some information on that as to those SATs? Cause I know that they've been canceled.
Jeff said that better, but you know, they, they, they were not done this year, I understand.
They, they were not done.
That's correct. They were not done, uh, just similar to all of the other high schools across Connecticut. However, they are being, uh, they are taking them uh now this, uh, this year and they've already begun, uh, kids in the tech schools have begun taking the SATs and SATs uh this fall.
Okay, so, so they have the necessary resources to be able to take the, the test online. Is, is that what I'm hearing? Cause they used to go in to take the test. Now the, the resources are, are provided to them so that they're able to make sure that
It, they did come in to take the PSATs uh as a matter of fact, last week. They do actually have to come into school to, to, to take the uh test. So as part of our hybrid, we scheduled, uh, scheduled the time so that the kids could come in and actually take the uh, the test. And one important note, for the first time ever, we've required all of our ninth grade uh, students to take the PSAT at the tech schools as a, just as a formative assessment for our kids uh so that our teachers can utilize that data to help the kids uh, you know, strategize and grow moving forward. So this, this ninth grade class was the first cohort at, at the tech system uh to take the uh PSATs this year. So that's a, you know, we're gonna actually deliver more of those uh tests uh than, than ever before in the system because we did add the ninth graders.
Good, good. That's, that's good, good information. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Item or section 11, academic standards. Any committee reports?
That's Eric's committee, Alan, so. I think it's meeting in December.
Okay. No, no other reports at the moment. That's fine. Unless there is some other business, I think we're ready to adjourn.
I, I wanted to ask, Commissioner mentioned that Desi was making an update on New Haven. Um, could we hear what New Haven is gonna be doing?
Thank you, Estella. Uh, just, I'll be brief. So a couple of quick updates um since the last time we talked about New Haven. Uh, just to make everybody aware, we provided 11,892 devices um to New Haven Public Schools along with 3,000 uh hotspots. Uh, New Haven Public Schools has also uh come up and met with the Accountability and Support Committee of the State Board um back in September. Uh, last month I had the opportunity to um speak at one of their board meetings to offer uh supports from the agency to continue to work with them as they were planning to um reopen in a hybrid model on November 9th. I'm sure that, that you all have seen the news. That is no longer the case due to the rising health metrics um in that, that, that area. And so our focus now has shifted to continuing to support New Haven around uh fully remote instruction. That support continues at the school level. Uh, many of you are familiar with the school level supports that we are providing to uh schools in New Haven such as Clinton Avenue and Wexler Grant. Uh, we also continue to meet with them monthly on their school improvement grant funds and the schools that receive those. Uh, our academic office, uh, our turnaround office developed a virtual walkthrough tool um so that, that we can keep an eye on, on what is happening uh around remote instruction uh for New Haven as well as continuing to work with them on uh the budget revisions process for a number of the grants that, that we oversee. Uh, one of the other areas that we are, are working with New Haven on is, is meals and being able to provide meals to families uh and to, to students um while they are, are fully remote. Uh, I was just informed um this week that there is a uh situation with the bus company where uh there have been a number of, of positive COVID cases and that is, has affected the ability to provide um uh different meal location sites uh for buses to make those deliveries. So we're, we're working with New Haven and having ongoing conversations um with them around how to strategize to be able to provide those meals uh to students while they are, are fully remote and while um the, the buses are not currently an option uh to use to provide those. In addition to that, um, we have a, a number of other things that, that we look at with New Haven around alliance. Um, constantly meeting with the superintendent, myself, uh, Charlene, Commissioner, others from the agency, uh, meet regularly, talk regularly with the superintendent and her um support team. And we're keeping an eye on, on the academic supports as well. They are participating in the CK3LI model, um, and, and a number of other things that we continue to look at um in supporting New Haven. It is, it is an ongoing effort by everyone in this agency um as, as you all are, are, are well aware and, and will continue to do so um while we are in this pandemic.
Thank you. Do they have any tentative date of when they could possibly go um back to face-to-face or no such thing?
I, I think it's a little early, um, given the, the, the metrics and the conversations between the district and the local DPH folks. So I, I think it's a little early to, to look at when we would, um, you know, when they would think about bringing kids in at this point.
Yeah. So if I could just comment on that, um, uh, let's share. Um, I had a conversation with the uh mayor of uh New Haven and the superintendent maybe a week and a half ago. Uh, they were uh kind enough to give me a heads up of what they were thinking. Um, when I spoke to the mayor, who has been a proponent of bringing students in the classroom uh from the beginning. Um, he, he shared with me that um in consultation with his health director, he felt uncomfortable um within November 9th uh date, given what he and the health, local health director have been finding. Um, he wants to make sure that uh bringing the students into school uh is constantly on the table uh as an option. Um, but he felt that based on the new data and I believe the community's uh elevated numbers uh recently that he himself felt that a pause on that should take place. And once the numbers go down a bit, he can say with more confidence to the community, we're ready to come back in. Um, you know, it, it's something that I share with those, I'm sure you feel that level of disappointment because we wanted those students to have that opportunity. Um, uh, you know, I think Danbury is the other community that um due to the numbers rising right before school started. Um, there are very few students there that had the opportunity. I will say New Haven has brought students in. Um, there are students that are special needs or students with um greater need, I should say. Um, but the number of students that have had X, uh, the opportunity to go in uh is, is low. Um, and they're gonna continue to, to think about that. But as Desi mentioned, the most recent decision was made based on um more recent spikes in, in COVID in their community.
Thank you. I, before, you know, there may be other people that have questions, but I, I, I will be remiss if I don't thank Aggie for that data report and uh having data like, like Malia always says, it's incredibly helpful. And we do get a landscape perspective of what's going on and, and therefore be able to to provide the needed support. So thank you so much for working so hard and providing us with that information. And also the uh technical high schools, uh, annual report is really, really wonderful also and very exciting to see the highlight and the quality. Uh, so thank you to, to both of them for uh that work.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
When you get back to the com, the committees, even if there is no report, I think for the record, like you, um, if we record that accountability met on October 20th. And I don't know, um,
I can provide that report, I'll be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, accountability met on October 20th and we had before us two charter schools that were asked to provide improvement plans. Um, we met with them, we listened to what they're doing and um, and tried to gain a perspective regarding how much have they um been accomplishing uh during these very difficult times. I think the challenge for accountability and for the improvement plan is the fact that um, they may not be data testing. So um, we will get there. When we get there, we'll um yeah, review what information we have and how can we decide what the recommendation is. But um, again, uh, we're planning to meet uh this month again and uh continue to look at um progress in, in schools that um having asked to, to work that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance audit and budget has not met, legislation and policy?
Yes, we've met um just right before this meeting. Um, Kathy gave us um an update of the proposal that we just voted on as a board. Um, we also will be having a special meeting um of the committee next, sometime next week, well, within the next 10 days to review legislation proposals. We had that on our agenda, but took it off because we wanted to make sure for the new board members, we gave it the time it's needed. Um, so I'm just gonna remind the committee members again to please um email me your dates um in the next 10 days that you'd be available so we can set that up. Um, we also had an update um from uh Desi and Lisa on goal number four. Nope, yeah, goal number four for um the plan. So that was an extensive update. It was a very, a very good update. Um, and I believe that was it. Uh, when we, and again, we had our discussion about school choice and that will be part of our discussion um when we meet with Laura for the legislation proposals. Um, what we plan to do with that statement that um, which, which is almost two years old now. So we will have some discussion, further discussion on that.
Thank you. Very, very productive committee. Uh, CTECs, is there anything else, Bob? Or?
I was a
Asprey, anybody? Okay, and anything from CERC, anybody or Commissioner?
Yeah, we did have a meeting for CERC um last week. Um, again, a, a lot of PD that they're providing, sort of a lot of what, what Charlene said that, you know, the dis, the um agency is also providing. It was interesting, you know, as many as you probably know, CERC typically has done a lot of offerings for special ed and IDA and um and so far since Ju, I think they told us from July until the meeting in October, 63% of their requests that they're getting from districts and town is for racial equity training. Um, and not for the special ed piece. So that they find very interesting and they're um doing a lot of work in that area. Um, not just for teachers, for, they've done it for town councils, they've um done it for communities. Um, I believe Madison was one community, Southington is approaching to address it as a, as a community. Uh, so I thought that was very interesting. And the Black Latino curriculum, um, they did set, set a date and I'm not sure with Eric now. They were supposed to come for standards and a assessment committee on November 16th is what they told me, but I don't know if that's still set. That they were going to bring the, the curriculum to you first. Um, and then the full board, we will see that curriculum presented to us on December 2nd.
Thank you. Malia?
I just wanted to, um, I just wanted to make a comment about the, the piece around the increase in, in training for DEI. Um, I, I wouldn't use the word interesting. I, I use, I would love to say it's heartening, it's encouraging, it's exciting. I'm thrilled to hear that there's more uh, more that are interested in doing that right now. I'm not surprised from the work that I do um with folks across the country. Um, this is definitely, and not surprisingly, uh, something, you know, DEI trainings are, are taking off across the country really in terms of individual organizations, boards, um institutions of higher education, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and for Connecticut to be um more and more taking that on at district levels and, and such, I'm, I'm thoroughly excited to hear that. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
It was nice that they, especially when she, um, you know, Ingrid went through a lot of the, how communities are embracing it and not just a school, a whole district is embracing it. Um, and that has been quite, quite their topic.
Um, going back to the National Association of State Boards of Education, uh, I attended the uh annual conference virtually. And I wrote a little report, if anybody's interested, I could send it out. But one thing that uh, the national teacher of the year made a presentation and she was an early childhood uh teacher in Tennessee. And she said that her district uh provides free early childhood education for students from four years old up. And uh, I was struck by that. We don't do that in Connecticut, do we? Free early childhood?
No, we don't.
No.
Some districts do, but not, not.
Some districts do.
Some districts offer programming, but not all and it's not universal.
Okay, maybe that's something we should look at to be, to catch up with fantasy.
Early childhood, isn't there, or depart?
Yes.
I recall that was a, that was a huge thing of Governor Malloy. That's what he really tried to put in, but again, it was funding, but certainly would be lovely to see in every one of our districts, free childcare.
Georgia provides the same thing because my daughter lives in Georgia and my grandchild was able to we have free early childhood education, so.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. Have a motion to adjourn? I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Have a favor. Bye.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and your commitment.
Good suppers, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye.